This meeting is called to order at 7:09. Thank you for attending, those of you in the audience. Okay, let me just pull the agenda from the agenda here. Members present, we're all here. Here from the public, does anybody, would anybody like to speak? Yes. Please come up here so we can make sure that people who dial in later can hear you.
Yeah, got to talk to the owl.
Yeah, speak to the owl.
The wise owl.
So I'm Vinnie LaMonica. To our Board of Selectmen and to the members of our town, I'm here tonight to read a prepared statement on behalf of the 23 members of the Babcock Cornet Band. Since my previous update, we have continued to grow, we have more. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the Babcock Summer Youth Band, the Parks and Rec Department, and our partnership with Sherry York that I'm grateful for beyond what words can express. So this past summer, after several years of planning and waiting for the right time post-pandemic, we launched the Babcock Summer Youth Band, which was a week-long, half-day camp held in Pompey Hollow Park, the old post office, and Nolan Memorial Hall. It was the last full week of July, meeting Monday through Friday with a concert on Friday night. We spent as much time outside as we could, but we found ourselves happily and gratefully utilizing the old post office for learning about music and composing. And Nolan was perfect for noontime rehearsing on a couple days where the sun was really blaring down. Our six fabulous musicians came from Ashford, Wellington, Woodstock, and Brooklyn. For the concert, they performed by themselves, listened to the Babcock Band play a piece, and then everybody joined together for two combined pieces. We had an open rehearsal where I had a hands-free microphone, so families could actually hear what we're doing as we rehearsed and understand what that process is. The concert went really well and left us eager and excited to continue the momentum. While I truthfully appreciated the small numbers for our pilot year, I've been working with local music teachers to get more kids involved, and I'm optimistic for higher numbers. And though I really am excited about the opportunity this gives kids to continue making music, it also really helps the band. The only way to keep an organization going for multiple centuries is to bring in younger people. Of those six musicians, two now perform with us year-round, bolstering our brass section. The goal is to continue this, bringing awareness to the community here and in other towns that there's an awesome band that is welcoming and so fun to be a part of. Sherry York and I have been in touch about dates, pricing, and other goals for this program, hoping to have the Babcock Summer Youth Band run the last full week of July, the 22nd to the 26th, with a concert on the 26th. Sherry is working on securing dates, and I look forward to making music with a second set of fantastic young musicians. I say this in almost every performance of ours, but I'd like to take a moment now to recognize Sherry York. Sherry York is, without a single doubt in my mind, the greatest gift Ashford has ever received. Course number two is the $3,000 to endow a band, and the separate $3,000 to form a new public library back in 1862. She works tirelessly, selflessly, consistently, and without ego to do what she knows is best for our town. She truly has been the band's greatest ally, providing us with performance opportunities, insight into the future, and now the support of the Parks and Rec Department for the Babcock Summer Youth Band. So thank you, Sherry, for everything and more. If anybody would like to reach out to me about the Babcock Cornet Band, our exciting summer youth band, performances, rehearsals, or anything else, you can always reach me via email at babcockband@gmail.com. Thank you for allowing me this time to provide an update, and I continue to look forward to receiving communication in the town hall. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vinnie.
Vinnie, can I have a coffee? Can I have a coffee?
Ah, this is my only one, sorry.
So if you want to, if you want to send it via email, let us know.
Generate an order.
Okay, anybody else from the public? All right, first electus briefing. It's been a busy one. I'm in the process of responding, well, we have a couple more questions. We have some more questions from the Board of Finance. Some questions I need to respond to, some questions that the fire department is responding to. We should have our responses ready before their next meeting, which is Thursday. The other things, and Chris, help me out a little bit, because I, when I grabbed everything, I don't know if I grabbed everything. We have looked at the capital improvement plan again. And I'm glad Paul's still here, since he's on that committee. One of the things that we're checking out, I'm trying to remember where we left off with this, but we had taken off, what we did is we've taken $100,000 off of this, the capital improvement plan, I'm trying to remember if I've already said this, so bear with me, okay? My husband says I sometimes repeat myself, and I don't want to keep doing it here. It's okay at home. The, the thinking is, and this is a draft, and I think you've got a copy, did you get a copy in your mailbox, Phil?
I didn't go up there tonight.
And in taking, it's taking that $100,000, or whatever it will be, because there's also $14,000 for, and this is for the roof.
For the firehouse roof.
Firehouse roof, bear with me while I lurch into this. It also, you know, we have to take into account there's $14,000 in change that it's going to cost to take off the solar and put it back on. So the suggestion that was made, that's right, I hadn't talked to the selectman yet, but I did give this as an update at the Board of Finance meeting, because I wanted to be timely, is that a suggestion to have, instead of having the money come out of CNR, instead have it come out of the undesignated fund, so that work can begin before July 1st. Taking into consideration, we're going to have rain and other inclement weather, and you probably would want to get started sooner rather than later. So we couldn't start anything or spend any money until July 1st if we wait until the next fiscal year. So, which is what the capital improvement plan is for. So, again, my recommendation would be that, that the Board of Selectmen actually recommend that we take that off and have it be part of coming out of the designated fund. Recommend that to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, I, I heard that at the Board of Finance meeting, I think it's an excellent idea.
And Chris can read this one.
Be interested in Paul's input on that, I don't know, having not been involved with talking with contractors.
I wish I would have thought about it.
Okay.
Did you catch what I was talking about? Yeah.
No, I was, yeah, it was a fantastic idea. The bottom line is, is the roof needs to be fixed.
Needs a back.
Going on 20 years old, the sooner the better. Every time we get any substantial rain, we have a couple of leaks now. Chris and I are working with Duncan about, with the solar company, that's worked that way. Because some of the problems caused by their installation, but the remainder of the roof needs to be replaced, it's going on 20 years old. So the sooner we get to it, the better. We work with two contractors now, I've got a really good estimate, like detailed estimate from one that I thought was very fantastic. I, I think it's a good idea. And from a financial standpoint, the only difference is, besides the timing, is the funds just need to go to town meetings instead of waiting for the, in the.
In the budget package.
Right, and on that town, okay.
I, I brought this up before, and I, I believe you said you didn't look into it, but did you look into a steel roof?
I don't know.
Do you have any idea the difference in cost?
Three times.
Three times?
Because you have one on your house.
I have one on my house.
Well, I know we put one, when we had a donor leave us in his trust, we put one on Nolan Hall, and it was a lifetime warranty on it.
Most of them are lifetime.
You know, on a municipal facility, we know that it's not going anywhere.
Can you put solar on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I won't worry about mine, but you can.
They say you, I, I don't know, personal experience.
So what type of metal roof did they put on Nolan Hall?
I'd have to go back.
I don't remember, I'll pull it for you.
Bill Parity had donated all of the costs associated with that at the time, and I know we've had no issues with it.
I just never paid attention to it.
Yeah, and I know that since that time, that was what, 15 years ago? 12? It was some time ago.
Probably 2001, 2002.
We, we had no issues with it whatsoever, and it's a judgment thing, but I mean, if you were to say it was 30% more, 50% more, I think.
Generally speaking, it's, they tell you to figure three times the amount, and that's what it was when I put it on my house, they can tell you that.
And they've come a long way since 20 years ago.
I can, I can reach out and see if there's a vendor that will give us a quote, but.
Well, what I don't want to do is delay the project, because I agree with Catherine's theory, it's better to get this in place and in motion than to be waiting.
So the Board of Finance meeting is Thursday, so tomorrow I can reach out to them all and say, somebody, I know the square footage of the roof, because we've had to do some calculations, so I can just get an idea.
If you could just get an, I, three is probably too much.
And what I was thinking is that the way that this would work is that it's been suggested to the Board of Finance, they can make a decision, and then they would ask the Board of Finance to call a special town meeting. Okay, that's the process, so it's rather timely that we're doing it now. And hopefully they can make a decision either this week or next week.
Well, I think the way the process would go would be, the Board of Selectmen would make a recommendation to the Board of Finance, Board of Finance would approve us calling a town meeting, and then we'd call a town meeting.
Okay.
But we need the dollar amount.
Yeah, we need the dollar amount for that, but we can work through that case. As far as a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, would we have a formal motion to do that?
I think that would probably be in order.
All right, well, right now I'm in.
Briefing.
Briefing, is it proper to do it within the briefing, or do we need another agenda item rather?
I think probably we have finished briefing, and then we can add it some to the final.
I'm trying to think, I have a heck of a lot more. One of the things that Chris and I were looking into also.
You can do it under budget capital improvement review.
Oh, yes, perfect, thanks. One thing we were looking at is, we're trying to understand, don't have Sherry Susie available to us right now to help us with this, we get. Yes. In, I'm thinking state funds, but I'm not.
Town aid road.
Town aid road, thank you, thanks, Mom. Town aid road, and what happens is, we get it in two tranches. It comes one part of the year and then second part of the year. And the first payment ends up being apportioned to CNR, okay? And that's for what you see on the capital improvement plan.
For road resurfacing.
So what you're going to see, I think it's a change on this one, so what we're also thinking of proposing, is there's a second piece that comes in, and it goes into the general fund. It doesn't, it doesn't, and it gets listed as revenue, but it doesn't. I don't, when you look at the legislation for the town aid road program, it says, okay, yeah, annual allocation split into two payments, with payments traditionally being issued in July and January, as the TAR program, transportation grants, is now bonded, payments cannot be processed until the bond funds are allocated by the bond commission. So that's the second part. So the grant allocated to each town is based on several calculations that include town population, miles of improved roads, and miles of unimproved roads. Under Section 13A-175A, towns and boroughs may use these grants for various purposes, including the construction, reconstruction, improvement or maintenance of highways, sections of highways, bridges or structures incidental to highways and bridges, or the improvement thereof, including the plowing of snow, the sanding of icy pavements, the trimming and removal of trees, the installation, replacement, and maintenance of traffic signs, signals and markings, and for traffic control and vehicular safety programs, traffic and parking planning and administration, and other purposes of programs related to highways, traffic and parking, and for the purposes of providing and operating essential public transportation services and related facilities. What this is saying, if I understand correctly, is that these funds are supposed to be used, basically, to improve our roads, anything that's related to it, materials, whatever. So what's not, I'm trying to understand how this works, so I'm just going to talk, think out loud. So here we are, we have the capital improvement plan, we've got, part of the monies are over here. Then we have, in our general government budget, town road maintenance, that kind of thing, and, and things for it, you know, stone, whatever, materials, and we're taxing for it, okay? And then we have this money that comes in, that's the second payment, it's just going into the general fund. So I guess they've been doing, we've been doing this for many years. Talking with Sherry Susie, she's going, why are you guys splitting that up? Why aren't you putting it all in, basically, CNR for the roads? And we don't know, it's been going on for so long, I think people forgot why we did it that way, and maybe we were trying to bump up our undesigned fund, or, you know, that kind of thing, back when, but it had to be a lot of years ago.
I, I think John Zulic got that information, now that was.
Back then.
That was, you know, 25, 30 years ago.
Right.
And it's always been, first of all, they say January, July, it's, it's a rarity that we usually get it on time from them.
Oh, thank you.
Unless I'm mistaken, it's.
Well, I think it's all dependent on when the bank condition makes.
Right, right, I mean, and, and which depends on when the governor decides, and when he, if, there's been a number of occasions, they haven't met for six months at a time, during COVID particularly, but even before then. But I just think it's a, a, a management issue on where you're going to put it. I'd look, I'd look for a recommendation to our auditors, how, how do they do it in other towns?
Well, we know how they do it in Sterling. Are our audit services complete now that they've completed the audit?
I believe they're on contract until, I don't know if there's a.
They contracted for the audit.
I don't know if there's, what?
They contracted for the audit. So I wasn't sure.
I'd have to look at their scope of services.
Yeah.
For some reason, I thought there were dates put to it.
All right, so I wanted to, I wanted to bring that forth, because it may be that that's something where that can go into CNR.
Now, again, one of the things it does, because every year we budget that $205,000 in roads.
Yeah.
$147,000 of it comes from town aid road.
Yeah.
The rest of it comes out of CNR.
Wait a minute. The rest of it, yes, comes out of CNR, Loser, yeah, CNR Loser, town aid road, right?
Yeah, this is town aid, I've been looking at the audit.
$205 is made up of the 147 plus the.
Republican work.
I know what Joe had complained about for years and years since he came on, and his predecessors were, while we were pretty consistent with the amounts of dollars we dedicated to road resurfacing.
Yeah.
How much that gets accomplished over the years has been decreasing, because of cost of material.
Well, that is exactly what's happened, I'm talking with Casey this morning. He said they were only able to do like two miles, okay? And he's trying to do three point something miles by July, or by then of June, and he has specific roads, or specific roads he wants to get complete, and he's pushing to do that, but the cost of materials and everything is really prohibitive.
I think we had, I had asked John Belage, in fact, when he was our highway foreman, he took special classes to do five-year projections and set up a whole, and it was based on, I believe, two miles a year.
Something like that.
3.5 or something. And we had specific roads that I had him lay out, or whatever.
Right.
It, with the economy being the way it is, and with dollars as short as they are now, that continues to shrink.
Right.
Which is problematic, I.
Yeah, the, and one of the things Casey is working on is, you know, what's our plan? Okay, he's got the plan for getting us through this year. Now, what is our plan for next year? And we're going to be working with him, this is the first time really laying out something like that. And I don't think we've had anything concrete in front of us for a number of years, or what the plan was.
Specific software to assist with that.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, on his machine?
I don't know on his machine, but I mean, there, there is software available out there.
That would be great to.
For us to get for him to utilize, and Casey, as you probably were, is much more computer savvy than.
I know.
Some of his predecessors.
Okay, so I wanted to bring that up as a possible change that we might want to pursue. Now, what it does mean is that that money would not be going into the general fund. I mean, it would go there and then we'd get over to CNR, because I think that's the way things operate. But in terms of, you know, it's listed as revenue.
I, I wouldn't have any objection to that, as long as it doesn't skew our revenue lines.
Right, well, I'm, in terms of, I have to think harder about that.
That's why I'm thinking maybe the auditors can.
Yeah, so we're going to.
I think they'll still talk to you.
Who?
The auditors, if you ask a question about that.
I don't know, I've never called these auditors, because that wasn't my.
I always find them a good resource, at least I'd call and say, hey, how are you doing this in other towns? And they'd give me the.
I didn't go running there, because I'm kind of disappointed in the current auditors, so. But we certainly can, I can certainly reach out.
Yeah.
Okay. The, I'm trying to think if there's anything notable that's happened over the last week.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
And I booked you on a Sunday yesterday, but.
Oh, I called it up.
Okay.
Okay, so, on Sunday, thank you for calling me, we, I found out that the compressor.
Compactor.
On the compactor, compactor, was not working. That was early afternoon, very early afternoon, and I called Casey, he hadn't been in front. So on our way back, I was out with my family, and on our way back, we went by the transfer station. So I talked to both Tony, then, and separately with.
Gary.
Gary, and then with them together. So it was interesting, when I talked with, with Tony, he said, they hadn't, my concern, first of all, was that they hadn't called Casey. And he said that they didn't want to, they kind of want to give them a break, okay?
I was informed they had, but.
Yeah, that they had called him?
I asked that specific question, did you call the boss?
No, no, so, and then when I spoke with Gary, he was, he's been kind of running the show. And he said, they didn't, he didn't want to interrupt Casey. I said, Casey's the boss. I said, the way we should hear about this is, you should call Casey, Casey will call me, I'll tell the other selectman, thank God, you let me know.
Good luck.
All right, so, so I had that conversation, and then we went into the fact that Casella had not done a pickup last week, they'd called on Wednesday evening, and they're calling a particular number that they've been calling regularly, and never heard back. And then Gary called on Saturday as well. So my next question was kind of, and I didn't want to press them at that point, I really wanted them to make sure, to know that they talked to Casey. I don't think any, I don't think Casey knew that they hadn't done a pickup. So Casey didn't call on Thursday or Friday when Casella was open. So it went all was said and done, it was, we called Casella this morning. Casella is either, they're taking things out today or tomorrow. The problem was that supposedly the bin, the compactor, you know, sits below, or whatever, is, was overfull, and they had taken out, by the way, they had taken out a bin, empty bin, on Saturday to take care of it, and one of the reasons that Casey said he hadn't been concerned after he heard about it, is the guys were doing their job, they did exactly what they should have done. The only thing they didn't do was call him, and he couldn't have changed what happened anyway. So, go a little light on that, he's made a critical, they need to call him.
Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, and what happened was, then he couldn't call Thursday or Friday, because he didn't know. So we called Casella today, and first about a woman who said, the guy we talked with, Mark, whatever his name was, that came in to talk with us from Casella before, I think he's more like a sales rep or liaison or something, he was talking about the new arrangement back when, that's a couple of months ago. So I called him, I called the main number, and I, first of all, I called him, then I called the main number and asked for him, and then finally, they said he wasn't there, and they had, his name's DeVivo, one of the DeVivos called me, who was very helpful.
Tom.
No, what's Tom?
Ben.
Ben.
Ben, Ben. And I apologized, he gave us the number they should be calling, which is not the number anybody had, and that's a number that's checked daily, it's a voice messaging system, but they check it daily. So they would have gotten it through that, so now, they will call that number. The other thing was that, I can't remember if it was Tony or Gary, I think it was Tony that said they used to get receipts when, when it was the former company, they used to give them receipts. And he even said he thought it was with Casella as well, but they stopped doing it. So when they come to pick up something, they'd leave like an invoice, not an invoice, but a receipt of some kind. And what the guys at the transfer station were tracking, Gary was being pretty studious about it, he has a notebook, and he wrote down when he called, what loads they were supposed to pick up, and then he marked which ones they did or didn't, excuse me. So. And the story is that Casella will be making sure that we get, that the receipts are given to them when they do a pickup, they'll be very responsive to the calls, because now they'll be calling the right number. I also worked up a kind of a spreadsheet, and gave them a little, the transfer station a little binder, three note binder, that has, who made the call, you know, what the, the call, what date was the call made? Who made the call? What did they ask them to have picked up? And we categorized them as close as we could to what comes in on the bill, so that we can see. And then the other thing is to mark who monitored, checked, verified that the stuff had been taken, and, and when that happened. And so they're going to use that spreadsheet to kind of track, we're going to have the receipts, and we've never had the receipts come up clear to town offices. I don't know that they're needed, but it's nice to have the records, so you can kind of go, this is what they said they picked up, this is what they billed us for.
Well, that's, that's half the issue, the thing that concerned me the most yesterday, I was told to quote one of our staff up there, was that the compactor blew up, there was oil everywhere. Have you had a chance to follow up on that?
He said there was a small leak.
Small, that's not, well, a lot of times when these get to the end of the travel, or there's a large resistance, the fluid will bypass, like around.
So what they did was, they unhooked the, whatever it is that's connected to it, the thingamabob, big thingamabob, and it relieved the pressure or whatever, and then they were able to get the thing to work.
Okay, so it's operable.
So it's working.
That, that was my concern, because we're talking big dollar numbers.
Because we were talking about this.
Before.
Six months ago.
Fine.
And as far as the stories about oil going everything, one of the things I have learned in my 72 years, is somewhere between here and here lies the truth, okay? It's everybody's perception, so you end up having to talk to a couple of different people before you get the full story. So anyway, Casey's already talking, I'm making sure they call.
That's why I passed it on to you a little.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You know, I love going after the pieces. So that's where we stand on that, and so that was kind of good news. We got some additional good news today. The additional good news is we were contacted by, here. Darling, by Darling, about insurance. Okay, the company that we got the quote from. Okay, the company, um, that we got the quote from, the twenty-nine point five percent, they're not changing their quote, no way, no how. It's not gonna happen. The interesting news is that the state plan is now looking more attractive, correct? That at least that's what she told us, and it would be considerable savings to us. So I asked her to send me the information, I don't think I got it yet, uh, but send me the information. Apparently, the school, the union or whatever, the school is gonna actually meet on it tomorrow to talk about it. She just talked to, um, Dina today.
Can you join them?
I didn't ask to join them, I, what I.
The last time I had, the school joined us, and we met with.
Okay, well, what I can do is I can call, but they were meeting with their union, so I wasn't feeling terribly.
Representation there, and they had questions about the annual checks.
Well, not only that, so what's, what's being sent to us is, here's a link to the plan. So you can see what's covered, and you can check and see if your doctors are, your, whatever, are in there. And so I thought, okay, we have that, we hear what goes on at the school with their conversation. I didn't expect them to be meeting with them tomorrow, and we just heard about it this afternoon. The, uh, is that we would actually take another look, depending on which way they're going, I don't think we're going a different way than they are. What is interesting is there are, I think, eight hundred thousand people under that plan. And when you talk about spreading the risk, that's a pretty good thing, because what's happened is.
We've gone over that.
I'm sorry?
We've gone over that, we've talked about that, I.
Yeah, okay.
I, now, and I, I think I mentioned to you, last year was in committee in the legislature to make it mandatory.
Yes, you've mentioned that to us and to the Board of Finance, yeah.
And, um, I'm told it's, 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 hasn't been brought up, but it's still in committee to be brought up again. Uh, which may, we may not have a choice. The problem we ran into the last time, two years ago, when we were gonna go over the state plan, they gave us some figures.
That were hot.
And last, no, they were fine, and that's why we were leaning, and that's why we set up this meeting.
Yeah.
With everybody, and then last minute, they pulled a rug out from under us, and, and they were the same as what we were talking about with our.
I mentioned that to her, that's not gonna happen this year.
Okay, I'll believe it.
They had said even with that plan, it was a two percent increase this year, for that plan for anybody who was already on it.
Yeah.
Um, but they had, uh, some of what she was, you know, spewing, or rattling off, was, uh, sounded very positive.
Good.
She sounded pretty bouncy about it, I wanna see the facts.
Yeah.
And, um, without having a sales.
Were you at that meeting while we had it with the insurance? I mean, they, they were very comprehensive, and they, they had us sold. And I think a month before we were ready to commit.
Right. So when all is said.
I mean, I'm on the state plan right now, I, I.
You like it?
Yeah, I think it's a terrific plan, they're, they're buggy with getting follow up on checks on.
They was gonna have zero charge for certain things that you'd normally have a charge for?
I, I have no complaints with the charges, the copays or anything like that.
I think it was fifteen dollars for, it wasn't even a, it was fifteen dollars for a out of network, out of network, and that includes speculus.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that's pretty attractive, I know, I'm not on that plan, nor am I on the town's plan. Um, so, I, you know, I look at that minus forty-five dollars for.
No, I'm, I'm very sad.
So. I can call and try, I, I have other things that are on my calendar for tomorrow. But I really like them to have the opportunity to talk with their people, because I think no matter what, when all is said and done, as go they, so go we, is that correct?
Well, it makes sense to us, us going alone, you're gonna pay a lot more money, I mean, the pushback we were getting the last time was from the school.
I, I remember.
Uh, we would, like I said, we were ready to go, and then the last minute, they, they did what they did.
So let's see where this goes, in the meantime, yeah, so.
Anything's gotta be better than twenty-nine point five percent increase.
Yes.
I would hope.
Yes, okay, uh, that's all I have for now, unless you have any other questions? Don't, okay.
Not I, Mr. Phillips, mate.
Kinda think that it was, I don't think there's anything else that really pops up. And then they're like, I need agenda. That's what I have, and I don't have first saying next to them.
Except for the minutes, or you're looking for something else?
No, I'm just looking for the agenda.
You're looking for the agenda? Online?
Okay, thanks.
Online, my scribbling.
All right, Ashford School, uh, here for Boards, Commissions, Committees. I don't think we have anything. Uh, old business, Ashford School Roof Replacement Projects Update. Actually, Chris, can you help me with this, because we're trying to schedule a meeting for the interviews. And we still are not getting response from one of the companies. The one located in Connecticut, that we think is part of a franchise, this big, big, big company. So, um, it's kinda like, what do we do next? Is it, do we close?
Did we get any individuals that?
Well, I, I talked to Cindy, what's today, Monday, I talked to Cindy on Friday. Because I started doing some research, and Crick. Offers building services.
They do.
They do. So Cindy called, and talked to them today, I guess, they called her back today. They're willing to talk to us, and give us information, but they can't do it while our, our P is still active on the website. It's not really active, because it's past the response date, but it's still on the website, it hasn't been awarded. So I have to find out if we.
Can close it.
If we can close it, and.
I.
The consensus was to call the company from New Hampshire to bid, and have them come down to interview. And then we have solid standing to close the, or.
So at this point in time, I don't believe we have any commitments for interviews from the two companies. So, next steps would be, I, we'll try again.
I'm, for some reason, I, I'm a bit shocked that we just got responses from companies. I mean, I know in the past, we've got applications from individuals.
You have to remember also that it's late, because a lot of summer projects have already been booked, I've already hired owners, reps, and clerks.
And you, and with Crick, you did find that they had something out there.
I mean, I would think at this time, and, and you might wanna talk to councilor, but we can talk or require with whoever we want. If we're not satisfied with the number of responses, particularly, we, we got two responses, and one of them isn't responding to us?
Right, we've gotten three voice messages, can't link with email, because we have no email address.
I'm sorry, we have no?
No email.
For them?
They had no email address on their di, their.
Very lucky, that's also the higher.
No phone number, no email address. But if you go on, if you Google them, they're all over the place.
When that's where you think it's.
Like I told you, I think it's a franchise operation.
Somebody's out. So, next steps for this, do we have any thoughts?
You know, I, I, I used to be a headhunter, and we, we would take on clients. That were clerks of the works with major projects around the state, let me do some inquiries.
That'd be helpful, let us know, cause we need to do something quick.
Yeah.
Um, what else was around the school, oh, the other thing is, is, uh, we're trying to facilitate, uh, providing. Adequate information to the solar group, um, from the, um, um, architect.
Mark Robins.
On, uh, you know, weight bearing, with the load weight.
Load, yeah.
So I said something, I called him, uh, first I talked to Jim, then I called Tom. And said, hey, look at this information, this is after Chris and I sat through a very lengthy meeting, um, on solar. Did we already update that on this?
I don't remember.
Right. Yes, I just, believe me, our life has been a bit of a blur, but we're working through it. So we have a lengthy meeting with, uh, the solar, Mark Robbins. Mark Robbins, where he went through some potential, um, funding options. And so I've asked him to draw up what they are, what the steps are for each. General timing of those steps, and what the paybacks are, how that works. One is if we own the solar ourselves, which is somewhat appealing, based upon what he said.
The other person who was in on this meeting was.
The state.
State, was he from D A S?
Yes, D A S, I think.
And he's very familiar with what you can do, what you can't do, federal funding, state funding, how they work in conjunction, or don't. Um, he was very informative.
Uh, very informative, and so as a result, we asked for the information from solar, solar, Mark, Mark. Yeah, um, and to lay out both options, so that we can see them clearly on paper.
I, I thought low bearing capacity study was already done.
I'm sorry?
I thought low bearing capacity was already done on the.
There's a certain, there's a certain. But it wasn't documented as.
Sections, but not, evidently not for all sections.
Okay.
There were a couple of sections missing.
And for example, the one where they didn't have backgrounds in section. Which is a big deal, so anyways, uh, so we're facilitating, we're facilitating the, uh. The information getting passed from the architect to the solar. Um, which is unfortunate, and I haven't seen it done yet, it's supposed to be in an email. It was supposed to have been in the final version of the.
Plan?
Plan, plan. And I didn't see it, we looked for it.
Well, then, then had the engineer come in to do the load testing. And, you know, he did a thorough job, diagrammed almost everything. Or, or figured out load bearing for almost everything, but there were some pieces missing.
Right, and it's, it's what you would expect, we actually got a sample from Mark from another initiative. And it's quite obvious, all you have to do is put the poundage on there, and it's what it will bear beyond normal.
One of the things I was disappointed, at one time, I'm trying to remember who told us they'd bring them in. They were gonna bring in the, um, either the foreman or the clerk at the works, they call them, E O Smith.
It's gotta be a while ago.
Jim approached him.
Yeah.
And he wasn't very receptive to.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I thought that'd be a wealth of knowledge to have that.
Yeah.
But.
So, uh, that was the other thing on the school, other than that, that's where we are.
Good.
And she, you're trying to set up interviews and meetings. Okay, uh, discuss an act on ACE equipment logging requests accessing cable rock property. I haven't had time, this one, this one bears more scrutiny. Because they're talking about cutting a, I wanna say a swath through the woods. They're not talking about following the trail of the sale, they're talking about cutting through the woods to, uh, the platforms.
You know the road that was, we put in, or they put in?
I'm sorry?
You know the road that they put in, that they got the funding, they spent a million dollars on, do you know who's?
No, that was the EPA.
Right, you know who's, well, was coordinated with.
It's all in Wellington.
Was all the remediation, do you know who's using that road now?
Who?
I don't know, I'm.
Nobody, as far as I know.
There are people using that road.
Wellington.
I've seen traffic going in and coming out of there.
They have given permission for people to go in, because it's not ours.
Alright, just curious.
Um.
I'm just curious if they're, that's the way they're getting into cable rock from the back end.
I have no idea.
So I, I'll call the Wellington for selecting, and ask if they've got, given permission for them to go in, yeah, I've been meaning to call them anyway.
Yeah, there's, I've seen several times, I've seen traffic in and out of there.
Yeah, I, I just have a really bad, I know this doesn't sound right, but I have a really bad feeling about this.
Well, one of the problems with the logging thing, and why they were pushing so hard to get in last year, was to do it when the ground was frozen, now we had such a wet season.
Right.
But we're just, we're just gonna be going into the wet season now, wouldn't be the time to grant them permission? Have you talked to John Patton at all, I mean?
No.
Have we heard from John Patton at all on that? I'm just wondering what his mindset is.
No, I can follow up, thank you.
I mean, he's the one that's contracting ACE.
Oh, you mean to have the conversation with him, saying maybe that's not the company you should be working with?
Well, just have a conversation, how do you think things are going, and we're at a stalemate here.
Okay.
I mean, I'll leave that up to you to, the conversation, but you can, you can talk pretty openly to John.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, finalize town, town building use fee schedule and Ashford Food Bank donation policy. I have been working on, uh, and I haven't finished it, drafting, um, I've worked with Sherry. And worked with Laura, and worked with Melissa, on how, you know, funds will come in, that kinda thing. We're all ready, getting checks, they're made out to Ashford, Town of Ashford, okay, they're getting recorded. What, uh, Sherry Susie did, or Laura, you know who we had, uh, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollar.
Yeah.
Balance in a savings account called the Ashford Food pantry. Okay, they're closing out that account, I think they already have, they moved the money into a checking account.
Okay.
Ashford Food Bank, okay, I think that's the name of it. And the intent here is to have the, um, checks come in. And they shouldn't be giving us a check until just before the event, so we don't sit on checks. Uh, one check is for the, uh, use of the buildings, and, uh, the other one is for cleaning fees.
So the use of the building would go to the food bank or somebody otherwise, if they're not happy with that?
Bear, bear with, bear with me, I'll finish.
The other one's a cleaning deposit.
Yeah, the other one's a cleaning deposit, and we hold that until we know that they cleaned them. The, um, but in terms of the monies getting processed, they would go, what would happen is, we'd give the checks to Melissa. I'm sorry, Melissa, who records, she records all of the donations, so treated like donations, okay? And then those monies would go into that Ashford Food Bank checking account. And that checking account, she would make, uh, uh, requests, if you will, for, okay? She could use it for almost anything but food related, okay? So she could issue checks to the Ashford, the other Ashford Food Bank, like the church, it's food bank. She can, um, issue food cards for the different, uh, stores. She could issue, um, whatever vouchers for the.
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market, or anything food related.
Which she does now, she's been doing that rather long.
But she hasn't done it through, she hasn't been able to get it to eight hundred and whatever, so that, and what we like to do is have that initial eight hundred and. Uh, eighty, uh, eight hundred and eighty bucks via check over to the.
Yeah.
Food bank at the church, because that's where I believe it was truly intended to go.
Yeah.
And I think what Cheryl did, was Cheryl set up a savings account, why a savings account, I don't know, wasn't there. You don't know, none of us know, uh, but it's like, you could get the money out. So now we have the opportunity, and what I'm thinking is, it might be nice if, she can work up a schedule. Of, uh, you know, if she wants to do that, like quarterly or whatever, something that's manageable. But that the monies are there, and she is managing those monies, just like she does with other donations for stuff. So, um, that's what I've been, I'm writing up. The other thing I'm doing at the same time is writing up, I've looked at a couple of town, I'm gonna call them rental. Uh, agreements, uh, different, that the different towns have, and I found a good, a couple of good models. And so I'm working from that to go, okay, the people who can use our buildings are eighteen, you know, the Ashford resident eighteen or older. Okay, and then there's a form you fill out, it says what the event is, what kind of, how many people you expect, that kind of a thing. Uh, so they actually fill that out, so we have the information. So we have the information, so you don't have something where, um, like the thing with the, we had the entire second grade class supposedly coming to this dance, and it was, you know, where they were going to be doing it and everything, and then when we, you know, found out it was, a lot of dirt got tracked in or whatever, at least we would have a sense of what the issues could be.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
So, I'm hoping that this is the way that the selectmen, my fellow selectmen want us to handle this.
Well, you're gonna do a draft policy then.
I'll do the draft policy and bring it to you. But in the meantime, what we're doing is we're following that, we're just kind of putting it through because we're getting the checks. And this is a good, this is a good amount of money because people are using our buildings. So, um, so, to me, I just think it's great that we have a vehicle to provide food in the community. And then we already have a mechanism that can help us do that.
While you're talking, reminded me of something, and we'll have to sit down and go over it, Chris can go over it. There is monies in a fund for the Bad Dog Band?
We've already, we looked at that a couple of years ago.
Nobody can come up with it on how it can be used, what it can be used for.
Well, what we did do was we checked up in Boston. And I'm not sure, this is when I was first selectman before. And, uh, we were waiting to get the information from them as to what was the true intent. And they had the documentation or whatever. I don't know if we ever got anything.
I don't think, I don't think there is.
We could do, we'll do another follow-up, uh, but it's only because we're not clear on the intent. And so you have to get back to the original documents to get it.
We, we're going back to.
Seventeen something.
Seventeens?
Eighteen sixteen.
Oh, and I'm sorry, eighteen fifty.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to get it.
I'm old, it just seems like everything was back then. Um, so anyway, uh, we can pursue that again, once we pick our hats up. Okay. Uh, believe me, I know considerable effort was put into it before.
Yeah, we got nowhere with it.
I know. Um, okay, that's all. Let's see, uh, that was town building use fee schedule and Ashford Food Bank donation policy. The fee schedule, uh, one of the things Sherry said is we have to be careful about calling it a rental. Creates a whole different thing. This is really use of the building for an event that's within town. So. The, uh, okay, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget CIP review. This is the one where we looked at that hundred thousand plus for the, uh, fire station roof. And, uh, consideration of taking, making recommendation to take that out of.
I will make a motion.
Yeah.
To approve, that the board of selectmen approves the first selectman advising the board of finance that our recommendation is instead of having that money for the group replacement for the firehouse come out of C N R. That we do, uh, we are requesting authorization to call a town meeting. And pay it out of our undesigned fund balance. And the exact amount of that request yet to be determined by the first selectman and the fire chief.
Um, thank you.
I mean, quite honestly, if we were talking about anticipating a hundred thousand dollars for that replacement, and the gold medal was a hundred and fifty, I'd push strong to go with a hundred and fifty. If it's three times that amount, I don't think it's doable.
No, it's not, it's not.
But on a town building with a lifetime guarantee on a roof, I just think it's a long-term investment.
Yeah. Oh, I had one more thing.
Is there a second?
Also good.
Okay, um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I did forget.
That was a great idea.
For my selectman's update, is that Fire Marshal came out and inspected this building. Milton, um, the senior center, I think he actually did senior housing as well. He's giving, he asked me if it was okay, he gave me a handwritten write-up, and I said, great, thank you.
We'll start there.
Yeah, and what's kind of funny is that I had been over to the senior center, uh, the day the kit came back. And I made very clear that the area where the furnaces and the, uh, was, needed to be cleared out. And I put up a little sign, and it was not just, it was not just senior center stuff that was in there. Little sign just said, please clear this out or clean this up. And I signed my name and I put my phone number, and, uh, and then I saw three members of ASCO who went in there and they were doing something, you know, replacing the rotting board and whatever, and I told them right then. And then, the fire department went in two days later, the Fire Marshal went in two days later and said, that's got to be cleared out. So, uh, and also, he may have, uh, there were other things as well, but he said that was the first thing. So I thought, okay, I think we're all getting on the same page here. Uh, and I did talk to him about our alarm system in here, I pointed it out, and I said, I don't think that's ever worked. We need to have it working, and making arrangements for some drills as well. So, uh, very, uh, it was a good experience, and, uh, we'll see what gets written up. I said, write, write up everything, write up everything because we want to take care of them, so. All right, moving back on track, the, uh, CIP review. So on that one, you've already made the recommendation, and was there anything else, Chris, that we want, we were looking at the, again, what do we do with the, um, town aid road that comes in? And we'll talk with Sherry Suce on Friday, and see if we can get some more background and check, uh, with the auditors. Uh, to see if that's a possibility, if we can use those monies in that fashion.
One of the things that concerned me, and I couldn't get recognized before the finance meeting at the first time, but, um, they need to get familiar with the concept of the C N R versus the undesigned fund balance.
Who does? Board of Finance?
Board of Finance. You've got, you've got a bit of work cut out for you there.
I can say that Paul knows what it is.
Paul does.
And he spoke up, and so you're not the only observer. Um, I'm a little taken aback, a little taken aback, okay? Uh, and I try to explain things, and I do get pushed back because some of the members feel that they already know. And no, that's not how they do it, and, you know, I don't want to get into an argument. I just want them to know this is what it's supposed to be, and be quite candid, I ought to know. We've been doing this long enough.
Well, and, and before, when we, this will. When we accepted that process, and, and that was developed, as you well know, there was a lot of research done on.
Oh, yeah.
Other towns with leadles and this, I mean, the auditors, everybody was.
It was a wonderful, healthy thing.
Now, this talk of, I got the impression from a couple of the members wants to reduce that to zero or, or, or a very, very small amount, so we increase our percentage on our undesigned fund balance, well, that's suicidal. I mean, for a number of reasons.
And one of the concerns I do have is if they even start to talk about taking money from the undesigned fund to offset any tax increases.
We, we should be much constructive thinking on how to increase this C N R.
That's exactly.
Not to decrease it, and I was worried with the way it was going, that's the way they were leaning last Thursday.
Well, and I was surprised that it was, uh, actually a couple of people who should be more knowledgeable than that. The, uh, we have some new members, I can understand them not understanding, they're just taking it all in. Uh, although they seem to contribute as they're going through, which is pretty good.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I, I like.
But some of the other members who've been there a while, I'm a little surprised that they don't.
Conceptually, we were going in the wrong direction.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, they're learning. Uh, okay, so, with that, we, again, we're going, um, in terms of the, uh, we'll talk with Sherry to find out if it would be healthy for us to pursue having the, um, town aid road, the full town aid road put into, um, you know, like our road resurfacing, the way you would expect it to be. And, you know, if she says it's not a healthy thing to do, it's coming in as revenue on the other side, it's balancing this out. Maybe it's too awkward to try and do it this year, maybe it's something you have to do more work on before you get there. I don't know. The, uh, next thing was new business, uh, board commission appointments, Economic Development Commission. Reappointment of Margaret Chaney to full member seat expiring February second.
My gentleman.
Two thousand twenty-nine. Thank you.
I will move that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
With many thanks.
With many thanks. Reappointment of Terrence Wickman to full member seat expiring February second, two thousand twenty-nine. That's Economic Development Commission.
I'll make that motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, appointment to fill full member vacant seat expiring February second, we don't have someone for that. Full member vacancy for two, uh, February second, two thousand twenty-five, don't have somebody for that. Uh, do we have this, is this just doubled? This is, or are there two full member vacancies?
One is Gary Lawrence.
It looks like we have three.
One is Gary Lawrence, and one is that guy that they wanted to appoint doesn't live in town. Those are two full member seats.
Someone who doesn't live in town?
He's not a taxpayer in town.
So he can't be on there, right?
No, but those are the two vacant full seats.
Okay, and then the appointment to fill that other one, they're all the same end date. There's three of them in the last three bullets.
With a full member vacant.
I had a feeling that the last one was.
Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four.
And we have no recommendations, right?
Gary Lawrence.
Not all of them.
I just had to do it twice.
Okay, so it's the second one, the last one comes off. Okay, and then inland wetlands and watercourses, we don't have anybody to fill these seats either. Okay, full member vacancy and alternate member seat. Ag commission, reappointment of Doug Jenny to full member seat expiring March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-seven. I'm motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with appreciation, thank you. Appointment of Nicholas Weinstock to fill full member seat vacated by Paul Varga to March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-seven.
And that's recommended by the ag committee?
Yes.
Didn't we get a letter from?
Did I get a letter?
We have an email from Luther.
Thank you.
Did we get an email from him or the person?
Sorry?
Did we get an email from the person?
Weinstock?
He was an alternate.
Okay.
So he's just being moved up.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. And then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Appointment to fill alternative member seat expiring March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. It looks like we're in it with the second one, because Nicholas Weinstock's moving out.
Right, that's his vacancy?
Oh, it's his, okay, okay. And then zoning board of appeals, one alternate member seat, term of which expires November fifth, two thousand twenty-five, we don't have anybody for that. Ashford Parks and Rec, uh, yes, Ashford Parks and Rec Commission. Reappointment of Dan Kehoe to full member seat, which expire, which will expire April first, two thousand twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. Thank you. Only because of some of the behavior. That's my reason, something needed a reason. Uh, reappointment of Leslie Bazili, Bazil, to full member seat, which will expire April first, two thousand twenty-nine.
So moved, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Amanda Holden to an alternate member seat, which will expire April first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Roger's turn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Review request to alter transfer station hours. Uh, no, I don't, I won't pass on this for now because it's kind of like, they're not going to hold a meeting, the transfer station committee. So, do I need to hold them all?
Why aren't they gonna hold a meeting?
For them?
Just to have a meeting, they haven't had a meeting now in months.
I don't know that they think they have, feel they have the need. I think they thought they fulfilled their requirements.
I talked to Keith yesterday at the dumb transfer station.
I know you did, yeah. He thinks they ought to have a meeting too. Well, I don't know what he said to you.
You know, what he knew about the hour thing, he had heard from you.
Yeah.
Um, you talked to Terry.
Yeah, I talked to Terry, I said Terry's stuff. I, I said Terry, the proposal.
I, I asked Keith, I said, why don't you call Terry and send a meeting? What's the big deal? I don't understand what the big deal is. They don't know.
They really don't eat very often at all?
No, they don't, right. Last three meetings I've had to ask.
They're aging out or whatever, because that happens all over the place.
They're busy, but let's pass on them.
Okay, uh, okay, so, uh, tax refunds. None.
None.
Agenda items for upcoming board of selectmen meetings.
Get through the budget.
Yeah, let's get the.
Oh, well, that's just it. The board of finance is gonna make some decisions Thursday night. Should I be trying?
He told me that they would, Christina, that they were aiming to finalize on the twenty-eighth.
I know, but they're going, they're going to make decisions tomorrow, uh, Thursday night for us to have to react to.
Yeah.
Okay, and then whatever we come back with, they're gonna finalize.
We need a special meeting just.
Yeah, we need a, well, we are gonna need a special meeting. I cannot do a special meeting on Saturday. But I would like to be able to do a special meeting before they get to their February twenty-eighth meeting, because we're gonna have to apply whatever changes they would like. What I did pointedly say to them, I don't know if you caught it, was whatever recommendations they're making, you know, if they recommend something, I'm going to assume recommending a cut. If they do that, I expect them to give their rationale for where they think that ought to be. Um, not just like blanking a thing.
I'm concerned about their concern and what they were bringing up about the cap on the motor vehicle and its impact. You must have seen an email.
So we got another email on that. I didn't get a chance to read that.
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or something, somebody told me. I wasn't on the email.
We get reimbursed, if I understand correctly, with Sherry Suce, but it doesn't come until like a year later, something like that.
I think that's the way it works.
Yeah, that's what she explained to me, because we did go through that, and then, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen what, uh, the chair's last email was on it.
You know, some of the confusion on the board of finance, and Sherry Suce pointed it out and tried to explain it. Is that state in its infinite wisdom changes the names of things.
Yes.
So, you know, why aren't you getting municipal aid?
Yeah.
Because it's not called that anymore, it's called.
And I actually documented that in one of my responses to that.
Right.
Um, also, I have, um, part of the responses we're giving are, um, about the mowing, and again, about the mowing. I already laid it out as to what the mowing was, but I'll lay it out again. I actually wrote around with Casey to look at the places where public works mows, and why they need what they're asking for. They mow the hills. They mowed every, they mowed basically everything except, you know, all, all the edges. And one of the reasons they do that, and even down here at Pompe Hallo Park, they, um, for ticks, that's one of the, they have to go and mow near the pickleball and everything, and get that mower down into the area where it's all brushed.
They mow all around this, I mean, there's a number of places.
Yes, they, and they mow out here.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I know the, that mower looks like it's a target for getting taken out. The reality is, they need it, they actually need it. And the, uh, devices that they're coming with it, one is a, they do a rake thing on the, uh, baseball fields. They, uh, and they have, the other thing was a, I forget what the other attachment was.
Their, their priority right now should be things that are impacting the mill rate. That tractor is in C N R.
I agree. So, um, so I am going, you know, mounting a vigorous defense, because I honestly think they need it.
I'll support.
If we want to approve the minutes from, uh.
Oh, my goodness, thank you so much. Uh, yes, approve the minutes, a regular meeting for, uh, April, I'm sorry, March, March four?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I will update my agenda then.
Thanks. No, I was going to keep that. You might need that. Okay. Oh, here, I think this was probably the benefit. All right. So.
I've got eight nineteen.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and, uh, let's see, I see Mr. Silversmith's on, oh, you had your hand up. Mr. Silversmith, before we.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I know there's no place to talk here after this. I just wanted to mention early on, you had talked about the, uh, um, automobile, uh, mill rate. And I believe, I believe from the memo that Paul had mentioned at the last Board of Finance meeting that had come out. One of the things that's changed for the state, and I believe it's for this year, for twenty-four. I don't know if they're talking about this twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, but the assessment has changed. Where for every year of age on the age of the car, it reduces down by five percent, the assessment, starting at eighty-five percent and moving down.
Interesting.
And it's still at the thirty-two point four six percent.
So that would have a negative effect on our grand list?
Yeah, depending on how old the cars on average in town are, yeah.
Uh, interesting. Hadn't heard that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We've got.
We had a motion for term.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you, folks. Good fun.
And let's see.